Good evening and welcome to the November 18th meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Charles Evans for our invocation and pledge.
And before we get started, Mr. Jeffy, don't mind me saying, we have a magnificent young lady here tonight, Ms. Ben Toe McNeil, who will be leading us in the pledge, is a student at Pine Forest High School, and also a member of the Air Force Army T C there, and very active in other community activities. Uncle Charles, they had time to write it all down. But I am so pleased that she joined us tonight. Thank you so much. Would you stand for the prayer?
Dear Lord, I have the Father, as once again that we've come before you with bow down heads and open arms, asking for your guidance, your help, and your support in making the right decisions that will benefit all in this community, Lord. We need you, Lord, to take charge, as you normally do, and make sure that the benefits that are given and that are received by each and every one, that we will help those that need our help. And all these blessings that we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, young lady, my niece. Could you come up, please? She's not really my niece, I just love calling her attractive, young lady, my niece. Start this way.
At this time is our public comment period, and Mr. Martin, will you read the rules of the public comment period, please?
May I recite them from memory? I failed to bring my file, I have it over here, but I think I can do it. The public comment period has been established to be fifteen minutes. Each speaker is allowed three minutes until the fifteen minute time limit is attained. The fifteen minute period may be extended at the pleasure of the board, and we would ask the speakers to come to the lectern and speak into the microphone. I think we do have maybe three speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Adam Clerk, you call the first speaker.
Okay, we actually have one speaker and a group of three speakers.
Excellent.
I would call our first group of three speakers, Ms. Mary Ann Roberson, Ms. Kimberly Thomas, and Mr. Randall Thornsberry.
Welcome, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We're with Cumberland Residential and Employment Services and Training. We would like to present a resolution of commendations to the Cumberland County Board of Directors.
Whereas the Cumberland County Board of Com- Commissioners faces enormous challenges balancing out tough economic times, and with the many needs of, I mean, many needs that the county and whereas the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners has also faced a multitude of issues dealing with mental health, substitute abuse, and intellectual and mental disability restricting that the federal state in original levels, and whereas the needs of intellectual, mentally disabled, I D D community do not diminish just because economic times are difficult, or the burdens politics is difficult.
Thank you very much.
Whereas despite these challenges, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners has consistently supported and continues its commitment to the I D D community here in Cumberland County, and has pierced the veil of the challenges to maintain its focus on serving its citizens, and whereas the community, I'm tongue tied, whereas the Commissioners' commitment has enabled Crest to provide a place to call home to many of those vulnerable I D D citizens, and whereas the Commissioners' commitment has enabled Crest to assist those vulnerable citizens in improving their life skills, including but not limited to employment and training and actual jobs.
Be it resolved that Cumberland Residential Employment Services and Training Committee Crest commands the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to overcome all challenges and obstacles in always serving all the citizens of Cumberland County, and be it resolved that Cumberland Residential Employment Services and Training Incorporated commands the County Managers Office for effective and efficient operations in support of the Board of Commissioners. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be the first entry posted on the Crest website and submitted to all local newspapers and television stations, to all the elected senators and representatives, and to the entire Crest community.
Thank you, thank you very much for those kind words, and I think I can speak for the all the Commissioners that we appreciate very much you taking the time out and letting us know how this has affected you, because we don't take these decisions lightly, and we try, all of us try to do what's best for our community. So, thank you again very much for coming out tonight.
We have one additional speaker, Mr. Dwayne Patterson.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson, welcome.
Welcome. I'd like to also mention that Dave Alred is back here, but really, we wanted to just come back and say thank you. We know how much time you spent trying to deal with the challenges of dealing with mental health, as well as all the other challenges you face, and we just wanted to come back and say thank you one time. And we also see that the hat lady, Ms. Holloman, too. She's been very helpful to us as well, and transition is always difficult, and she called me on a regular basis to make sure things were going fine, but her staff is working so hard, I felt like I'd betray them if I complained to her. And we have gotten through a very tough time, and I also want to thank the County Manager as well. We do have a small token of our appreciation, and I'll read it to you before I give it to you, if I can see it. This one is presented to, read this to each council member. Presented to council members for the County Board of Commissioners consistently supporting and continuing this commitment to the I D D community here in Cumberland County, which has pierced the veil of challenges to maintain its focus on serving its citizens.
It's okay, it's okay. Come on, you guys. I'll step on the way. What was that? What was that?
That's Marshall.
I did my last one.
They told us on behalf of the Crest people to stand that better here. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Faircloth, Ms. Chairman, I think that we ought to extend this on behalf of the taxpayers of Cumberland County, because they're the real heroes. Okay? Thank you, thank you again for taking the time out of your busy schedule, and this feels good. I'm glad you came, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, Adam Clerk, are there any more speakers?
We have no further speakers.
In that case, we'll close the public comment period, and Commissioner Faircloth has asked to be excused. At this time, I get the distinct pleasure to do something I really enjoy doing, and for all of those that sat through the class, they know how much I enjoy doing it. But we have our third Citizens Academy graduating class, many of them are with us tonight, and when I call your names, if you will please stand, and then we're going to take a group shot. To tell you a little bit about how the Citizens Academy came, this, again, this is our third, is approximately thirty individuals, citizens who came out and went through a rather intensive seven-week course covering at least twenty-one departments, and I can honestly say, and I don't mean to speak for the class, but every one of them has left the class more knowledgeable than they were when they came. We have, we have even some of the students are county employees in other departments who learned what all their other colleagues are doing, and everyday citizens are out there, and they just want to learn how county government works. I even found two of them that said they want to take my job one day, so I'm always looking forward to the next crop that comes through. But just to let you know, Commissioner King did say he was not running for reelection, so. Full spot. At this time, I'd like to call your name, and if you would, please stand. Mr. Dave Baggett. It's Antoinette Barnes. Heather Burkhardt. Jack Dalton, saw Jack, there you go. Joe DeCosta, Joe brings us tonight. Sarah Harner. Terry Herring. Corey House. Frankie Johnson. Frankie, where are you? Oh, you didn't come. Grace McGrath. Clifton Milton. Larry Milton. Sandra Milton. Lorraine Rayner. Renee Reichardt. Derek Riley. Michael Roll. Dishana Shure. Spencer, or Spencer. Thank you, Spencer. Appreciate, appreciate the cheer in the paper, too. Got it? Lester Smith. Vicki Techie. Andre Washington. Glenda West. Afrida Williams. And Cynthia Yates. We have a nice round of applause for each one of them. Sally, I don't think, your job here is done, but your last thing is get him a stigmatized line to come around. She's a very good teacher, isn't she? Please, come around. Come around the line. I will be remiss if I did not point out the excellent work by Public Information Officer Sally Shutt and John Souls in her department. They did an excellent job helping out with this. Okay, the next thing we're going to do is we're going to recognize some outgoing board members, and at this time, I'll call on, I'll call on Commissioner Ed Melvin, please.
It is a great honor and privilege and right to recognize citizens who have given their time and effort to make Cumberland County a better place to work and live. Tonight, we're going to recognize Bill Matricson. Did I get that name, last name, right? I knew it wasn't. County Cumberland Certificate of Appreciation presented to Bill-
Matrician.
Matrician. For outstanding dedication and service on the Cumberland County Community Child Protection Fatality, not fatality, Prevention Team from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, dated this eighteenth day of November two thousand thirteen, Jim McKee, Chairman, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. County Cumberland Certificate of Appreciation presented to Dr. Joe Mullis for outstanding dedication and service on the Workforce Development Board from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, dated this eighteenth day of November two thousand thirteen, Jim McKee, Chairman, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners.
Get a picture of him. Mr. Martin, first item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have several adjustments to the agenda I'd like to ask your approval for. These are not necessarily in the right order. When I started making notes, I ran out of space in the proper direction, so I've had to go all over the board here. The first one I'd ask you to consider is item five D three, which is an ordinance, it's a recommendation from the Policy Committee regarding an ordinance prohibiting certain activity on or within five hundred feet of a school. We would ask you to consider amending that, and in all places where five hundred feet is stated that you approve this for one thousand feet instead. Item six H, which is a minimum housing case, we would ask you, it's case MH twenty-five dash two oh one three, we ask you to pull and remove that from this agenda. Understand that property is now in compliance with minimum housing requirements. Next would be item five, six B, which is case P thirteen thirty-five, a zoning case. The applicant has requested this case be canceled, so we remove it from the agenda. Item six C, case P thirteen thirty-four, the applicant has, and I think that's noted actually on the agenda, applicant has requested that this case be withdrawn. And then lastly, item four, Mr. Tandon, the chairman of the T D A, is unable to attend the meeting this evening, and we would ask, we would expect to move this one probably to the, to the December sixteenth evening agenda.
Okay.
That concludes the changes that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman, to the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to get a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
No move.
Okay, they've been made in second, all those in favor.
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is a presentation to the Board of Commissioners from Mr. Jaitling Warren, Cumberland County Register of Deeds and former county commissioner, and he is also the two thousand thirteen President of the North Carolina Association of Registered Deeds. Mr. Warren, welcome. Welcome across the hall.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate very much the job that you do. I have some insight into the work that you all put in it, and sometimes it seems thankless, but on behalf of the three hundred and twenty-five thousand citizens of Cumberland County, you have our gratitude for that. This past year, I had the privilege to serve as the President of the North Carolina Association of Registers of Deeds. This organization was begun in nineteen fifty-two, and it serves all one hundred registers offices. It's represented by all one hundred offices, and even though our offices do the same types of jobs, you know, what we do in our office, how we do it, the fee we charge for it, all of that is legislated through the general statutes of North Carolina. You know, when you have a very rural county like Hyde with about five thousand residents, you know, and then you come to Cumberland, and then you go to Wake and Mecklenburg, you know, we're a very diverse state, extremely diverse. You all, having served the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners as President of that organization, you all know exactly what we're talking about. This past year, from October until June, I had a goal of trying to visit all one hundred counties, all one hundred offices, all one hundred courthouses. With the help of my wife on some of our far western counties, and a few of my staff members on some of the counties closer by, we were able to travel to all of these offices. We've got, gotten photographs of the courthouse, or the building that the Register of Deeds may be in. Most of them are in courthouses. There are a few that are in an auxiliary building, or a building all their own just for the Register of Deeds office. We've got photographs of that, we have photographs of the offices, and how they're laid out, and some of their staff members, and that kind of thing. And what I would like to present to you, and each of you, I think, have one of these at your place, is a DVD with four hundred and eighty-some pictures from all of the one hundred counties. And they're in alphabetical order, so you can, you can go to each county and pull them up on your computer and take a look of them, look at them. If you're thinking about constructing some type of facility, or what the facilities are like in other counties, you don't have to make a road trip, you can just pull it up right on this, and it may, it may serve you as you're contemplating the needs of our county for the future. It has certainly benefited our office. Our staff of twenty-four, we're, we have space needs in this building, just like every other office. The one key fact is that the Register of Deeds office is the only office occupied in this building that has less space today than when we moved in this building in nineteen seventy-eight. All the other offices have far more space, ours has less, and that's okay. And I understand the space constraints. There's not a spare square foot of space in this building, not one anywhere. But by traveling around to all of these one hundred counties, and seeing the different offices, and how they, how they do their business, and how they've got their offices laid out, I was able to bring back at least one thing from every county I visited, every office. Whether it was an office up in Perquimmons County, that's in a building that was built in the seventeen hundreds, and both of the Register of Deeds employees were there the other day I was there, the register and the other employee. Whether it's an office like that, or whether it's an office in Durham County with a huge building, and they're just getting ready to move into another new building, and, you know, over in some of the mountain counties, and as far as the eastern counties as well, a lot of them are doing what they're calling a government office complex, where they'll get a large piece of land, they'll have a building for multiple county offices there, not just a courthouse, but multiple county offices. I'm seeing that a lot, that seems to be the trend. Some in the far western mountain counties that are very sparsely populated, some in the- the eastern counties, some of those in the more central part of the state, that seems to be a trend. But what we have been able to do is bring back an idea from each one of those offices through the help of our engineering staff, and they have assisted us in reassessing the space we have in our office. We're undergoing some changes over there, removing some things around, and by doing that, we can move our customer service terminals over to one particular part of the vault, and we can move our indexing section to another part of the vault, and by doing that, we've been able to create some space. And just wanted to thank you for allowing our office to serve the citizens of this county. Our office isn't about me, it's about our staff. We've got staff members that have been in our office for about 30 years, and they do a terrific job, and just want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight and present you with this DVD. I hope it is of some benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. We appreciate your service.
Mr. Warren, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
I would like to say to you, and also to the rest of my colleagues, I've had the opportunity to visit your office, and I know that I appreciate what has been done by you, your staff, and also the engineers over there. The space, the little space that you have, where you've made it to an incredible place for the citizens to come in and handle the business that need to be taken care of. So with your skills and everything that it took to make that happen, I appreciate what you've done, it's tremendous over there. And if nobody had the opportunity to go see what you have done over there, they need to see it. It's just tremendous.
Thank you very much, and it's a team effort, it really is. From county administration, finance, our engineering department, electoral department, carpentry department, you know, instead of buying office furniture, our carpentry department has built some furniture for us, at tremendous savings for the citizens of the county. So we're just so thankful for the entire team. We very much appreciate all of that. Everybody has worked together wonderfully on this project, and we should be finished in about another, I guess maybe about another month, so we would invite you all to come over and take a look at your convenience. Thank you.
At this time, we will have a presentation by the Alliance Behavioral Healthcare, the Local Business Plan, by Mrs. Ellen Holloman, and I would like to take the time, before you start speaking, Ms. Holloman, that I see some of our Board of Directors in the audience. I see, notice, are you there, will you raise your hand?
Chris.
Chris Bostock, didn't see Dr. Griffin, is he back there? And our fourth, Dr. Griffin?
No.
Our fourth is Commissioner Kenneth Edge, and it wasn't planned that all of our friends from Crest were here tonight, but I hope that you see how committed we are to what we're doing here, and we're hearing some great things, so tell us about some better things.
Well, thank you so much. Is it on, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I would also like to recognize that we have the Executive Director and a board member from Myra Verice, who joined us tonight as well, and you took my introductions of all of our board members. I would also like to introduce Rob Robinson, who is our Chief Operating Officer, and Hank Dedman, who is our local site director. Tonight, before I start, though, I wanted to share with you that at your places is a briefing book that gives you an overview of the functions of Alliance Behavioral Healthcare. I'm not doing this tonight, but this is just for your reading pleasure at some point in time. Tonight, though, I will give you a very high-level overview of our local business plan, as well as an update on recent RFPs that we released in September and October. Let me see now, okay. Starting with the local business plan, this is a requirement by the Department of Health and Human Resources that actually came out of legislation. It is a guide, it's a three-year plan, it guides us with the requirement of having five state initiatives that we need to address, as well as three local initiatives, and within that plan is short and long-term measurable goals. We have to report this regularly to the Department of Health and Human Services, and a real key, and the reason I'm here tonight, is that it requires your approval to approve this plan, so that's the reason it was sent to you in advance, and hopefully you will see that you might approve that tonight. In terms of the statewide initiatives, there are five. The first is a transitional to community living, and this is from the Department of Justice, known as the DOJ settlement agreement, to provide access to community-based services and supportive housing. The second one is what we know as assertive community treatment team and supportive employment. This is the most intensive service that we provide in the community for some of our highest need people. The third one is crisis services, and you may have read in our literature and our plan that Cumberland County is very much a part of the crisis system that, as we move forward with Cumberland County, with Cape Fear Valley Hospital. Closer to home, the PRTF is psychiatric residential treatment facility, and this is primarily bringing adolescents who have been served out of state back to local and closer to home. So this is an initiative, we've had quite a few across the state, and I think in just about six months, we were able to reduce the number in our catchment area in half. And then the fifth one from the state is ADD, and I was really glad to see our people from Crest here tonight. They know, as well as all of you, that we have had a waiting list for these folks for a very long time, and our plan will address how we're moving forward with addressing those needs. Local initiatives, we have three. The first one's called PROACT, the Preventable Readmission Options and Care Transitions, and this is really to help people who have physical health needs as well as behavioral health needs, and how we're going to work with our local community care networks to address their needs. A second, which I think is really, really exciting, that's open access to care, means that really, when you have a problem, or you know somebody who needs services, you don't need to be waiting a week or three weeks to get an appointment, you need to be able to go now. And our intention is to really spread that type of model throughout our entire system. This is a very, very exciting endeavor that we're doing across our agencies. And then the third one is the jail initiative, and obviously you know, as well as I do, between the hospitals and the jails, sadly, that has resulted in a lot of people going there instead of getting treatment. It is our hope that our crisis intervention techniques and working with CIT officers in our law enforcement, again, across our four counties, will help that we get people to the right place. The local business plan is a mechanism to assist in ensuring that our citizens get the highest quality of care, so this is one part of that system. Now, the second part of my presentation is about a recent RFP, the Request for Proposals, that was released on September 30th. Those proposals were due at 5:00 sharp on November 1st. The proposals were for current providers who are currently serving people in intensive in-home, community support team, and substance abuse intensive outpatient. Only the current providers were able to respond to this RFP. And again, the purpose of it was to ensure that we have quality providers, that they are meeting the state standards of giving services to our citizens. We did not allow providers who were outside of our four counties, who were providing services to the Cumberland County citizens, but they might have had a site in Robinson County, or one of the other neighboring counties, they had to have a site and be a part of the Cumberland County to be able to respond to this RFP. Again, the RFPs were to ensure somebody, that provider's in good standing, both with Alliance as well as the state, and that they have a history of providing services in accordance with the service definition. We were asking that they show us how they are meeting those requirements. The only three things that we asked beyond that was that they had to maintain a credential site within our region, and I just spoke to that, and they had to provide outpatient care in a credential site, and then have a medical director for at least 10 hours. And again, this is to provide a quality care of services. In total, we had 146 providers who were eligible to respond, we had 111 to actually respond, and we had 23 from Cumberland County. We had a meeting, we brought everybody together, so everybody would have the opportunity to ask all the questions that they had in terms of the process. There was an extensive question-and-answer period, and all of the questions were answered on our website, I think there were like 18 pages of those questions. We did not go into this process saying we're going to have 10 providers this, or 20 over here. That is not our intent. Our intent was, we wanted every single provider to be a quality provider, and be able to meet the standards, and show that they were meeting the standards. So we weren't trying to downsize to a certain number by any means. And it may be that after this process, I know that Myra Verice and some others really wanted to provide some additional services, but until we could get through this process and really see what the needs are, it was not, we just could not open it up until we really knew exactly how many providers we had. It is our intent that this has been a fair, transparent process. Our board, our Consumer and Family Advisory Committee members, as well as other, will be involved in the interview process. But first of all, I guess I should back up and say, there was a benchmark that they had to meet the minimum standards to move forward to the desk review. We did have a few that did not meet those minimum standards, but then the vast majority did, and moving on to the desk review, and then an interview process. I guess the only other thing I want to mention on this line is that there was an additional RFP for supportive employment, which is a new service for us. I would like to, before you ask me questions about this process with the local business plan, I would like to ask that maybe sometime in February, if I could come back and give you a status report of our first six months in operating, especially related to the county dollars, in terms of how we're doing. I think the Cape Fear Valley Hospital is such a major partner with us, and I'd like to say, if I could, you know, get on your calendar sometime in February to come back. And with that, that's very high-level, I think, appreciate you letting us come first, so.
Another problem, Ms. Holloman, thank you very much. At this time, Commissioner Edge, you're one of our board members for the Alliance, did you have some comments or questions?
Yes, just a couple of comments. First of all, Ellen, since my short time on the board, I have been very impressed with your staff and the way they do business, in reading and studying the business plan that you presented, and the strategies for achieving your goals, and what your goals were, and they're measurable. I think that's a step in the right direction. I also was very pleased to hear that the audit report, which we heard at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, was a very good report, and seems to be free of any deficiencies at this time, and so I'd just like to thank Ellen and her staff for actually implementing the legislation that the General Assembly passed, and we're moving forward. I think Mr. Bostock, Dr. Griffin, and Ms. Glaston would certainly agree that we're just proud to be a part of this Alliance group, and I think with the present leadership that we have there, that we're going to continue to do great things for the behavioral health in Cumberland County.
Thank you, Commissioner Edge. Commissioner Evans, you have a question?
Yes, Ms. Holloman, and thank you for the report, but help me to understand, I just, I don't think I grasp it. When you said, when you go through the process to open it up for other people, you referenced Myra Verice, have you finished that process yet?
No, no, it is still.
Yeah, I didn't understand.
I'm sorry. We're in the desk review right now, and then we'll move into interview process, so we're probably, we're looking to go to the board for approval of the ones who are recommended for a contract beginning next year, in probably the second or third weekend in January. So at that point, we will then be able to determine what the needs are, based upon the responses.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I believe, if I read through this correctly, we need to approve this plan, so at this time, I will move that we approve this plan.
I was taking a motion, but Mr. King, I think has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner King.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem, okay, I mean, I'm okay with the motion.
My question is, there's been some discussion about realignments of the counties, and where are we with that whole discussion about realignment?
It is still moving forward. I'm hesitant to say too much, only because the last time I came before you, I said we would have a map by a certain date, and that didn't happen. It is, my understanding, a draft map of how the realignment will occur, or at least a suggestion, will be within the very next week. So as soon as we have something that we can share with you as county commissioners, and our board, and other staff, and other community folks, we certainly will. I really don't have anything more firm than where we were when I was here in September.
Next point. At this point, we are a, we are a part of the Alliance group, we are joint, the Secretary has signed off on it, and everything's good to go.
Yes, good.
Yes, finally.
It's been a while.
This has been a long road, and as part of a small amount of chairman privilege here, I would tell you, I appreciate the professionalism that you've shown throughout the whole process. I wouldn't, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Moorfield, our county attorney, for being so involved in the whole process.
Absolutely.
I think we added about five years to his life, but everything.
You didn't take it away, then.
Well, we didn't take it away. But everything is signed, we are members, and we're looking for some good, and we're doing very well. So Ms. Holloman, the board, staff, thank you very much for continuing on with helping out the most vulnerable citizens we have.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Shall I have a motion on the table and a second? All those in favor accepting the report?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much, Ms. Holloman.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Have a safe trip. Okay, item number four was scratched. So item number five is a consent agenda.
I'll propose to approve, with the necessary changes presented by the manager.
Okay, necessary changes were Item V3, a move from 500 to 1,000 feet, and that was the only one, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number six, we have public hearings. First item is Case P13-44, so rezoning. I'll call on Mr. Lloyd.
Yes, sir, and actually, this will be the only one, the other two are withdrawn, other than the land use plan. This is a case to withdraw what used to be a conditional use overlay to allow manufactured home. It took that off, it just, the petitioner wants it to revert back to CP. There's no opposition, and the plan will be recommended unanimously, filed a staff recommendation for approval with a reasonable statement.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lloyd? Not, I'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers, I will close the public hearing. I'll propose to approve.
Second.
Motion made and approved. Discussion, Mr. Lloyd, bigs will not be mobile homes now, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The original was for a mobile home park, they've taken that off. They've taken that off.
They've taken off.
It's gone back to CP.
Okay, Roger that. All those, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. The next two items were withdrawn. Next item is Mr. Will Denny is going to present the Southwest Cumberland Detailed Land Use Plan, first draft. Welcome back, Mr. Denny.
Good to be back. While we're getting going, I'm going to introduce some staff members. First of all, like I said, good evening. Staff members on our staff that are working on the plan is, this is Denise Sykes, Pierre Bonner, and Real Lindbergh, they're new members of the staff. Pierre, she comes to us from Land Use Co., and Real Lindbergh actually worked on the plan as a member of FAMPA. And Belinda West, on the end, she left us, she's with FAMPA now. And then one other member of our staff, Hope Bernhardt, who was a county employee for 29 years. She was one of the most dedicated employees that I'd ever met. She worked in the department in the same place all those years. She was an inspiration to our section, but also an inspiration to the department. In the midst of this study, she lost her life, so if you notice, the page in the document is dedicated to her, and she went through the document until the absolute end. With that said, we'll get started. I'm going to do a kind of a quick and dirty presentation. First thing I'm going to do is I'm going to do an overview, and then I'm going to do the recommendations. Okay? The, after the 2010 plan, the planning board asked the staff to complete detailed plans for the entire study area. So as you can see on the map, we've done Spring Lake, North Central, Northeast, Wade, Eastover, North Fairville, Shaw Heights. We also did a smaller area plan for the Fort Bragg area, Vander and Stedman. We also, right now, this is southwest area, and currently we're working on Grace Creek, which will complete everything that's on the west side of the river. The study area is on the north, is the city of Fairville. To the west is Hope County, to the south is Robertson County, and it generally follows Business 95, with the exception that takes in the interchange owned by Hope, this is part of the town of Hope Mills, and portion of 95, and follows Rockfish Creek back up to Business 95. It also includes the entire town of Hope Mills. The process that we went through is, first of all, what we do is we spend about two months gathering information, compiling that information, analyzing that information, and then we send out a notice to the residents in the community, and we conduct what we call a vision session, where we present this data to the residents, and we also gather information from the residents at this vision session. And then we ask for volunteers to serve on the Citizens Planning Committee, which forms a steering committee for the project. The staff works through that steering committee until the plan is developed, and once that plan is finished, then they go back and present that plan to the residents at a second meeting and get feedback, and then that information is brought back to the steering committee or the Citizens Planning Committee, and they actually make their final recommendation. The staff finalize the draft document, and then it's presented to the planning board at a public hearing, which occurred in October, and we're at the governing board for fair adoption by this board and the Hope Mills Town Board. The Citizens Planning Committee, we had three community meetings. We had over 300 people participating in the process, and generally what we do is we ask them three questions. What's the vision for the area? They want to see, and basically what's good and what's bad. And what we're saying is good is an asset, and the bad things are liabilities. Now, these are the things that will prevent them from reaching their future vision. This is just a sample of some of the information from the citizens group. Okay, the plan is in two parts. The first part is an overall area, which includes the town of Hope Mills, and then within the document, there's a plan that's specifically for the town of Hope Mills. We will be presenting that information right now, but basically it has the same information for the overall plan. Some of the data that we gathered is, we gathered economic data, I'm just going to run through these, I'm not going to go through them, population data, population characteristics. We also did housing and housing characteristics. This is just data, I'm not going to get into the information. Natural features, such as floodplains, wetlands, and hydro soils. We also want to pause here a second. We also looked at the suitability of the land for septic tanks. And you see in red generally have severe limitations for septic tanks. The areas in orange have moderate limitations, and the lighter area has slight limitations. The green dots that you see are areas that have either septic tank failure or repairs or some kind of issue that required the health department's intervention. We also looked at endangered species. This is just a map of the woodpeckers habitats. We also looked at existing water system in the area. I mean sewer. This is water, the other one was sewer, and the water providers. We also looked at the thoroughfare plan developed by FAMPA in the area. The bicycle and pedestrian connectivity plan also developed by FAMPA for the area. We also looked at existing zoning, existing land use, the use that residential properties were built. We also looked at development activities, and want to pause in just a second. As you notice, the red dots are rezoning cases, and you can tell they generally follow the major thoroughfares. This being South Main Street, Hope Mills, Hope Mills Road, Cumberland Road, Camden Road. So you can see that mostly the rezoners, there's been a concentration of rezoners along the major thoroughfares. The area that's in green, that's either subdivision or a site plan approval, and the blue diamonds are border adjustment cases. We also looked at community facilities in the area. Looked at historic structures. In the area, the red is basically structures on property according to the tax records, it's over 100 years old. The blue area is Hope Mills Historic District, and the brown area is the Old Plink Road. We also looked at parks and open space in the area, and all open spaces actually are owned by nonprofit or the public sector. We looked at the impact of Fairville Regional Airport on the area. We took a look back at the 2010 plan that was developed for the area. And then the 2030 growth vision plan, as you can see in the 2030 growth vision plan, primarily there are four land use classifications, one being urban, two being urban fringe, the third one being open space or conservation areas, and then the other area being ruled area.
Well, we're in some technical, going back to your 2030 plan, so.
Okay.
Your 2030 plan is showing that the expectation is only a very small percentage of Cumberland County.
Well, that's just a 2030 plan for that particular study area.
For this study area, just a small percentage of that is still going to be classified as ruled.
Right.
Okay.
We also looked at the adjacent counties' land use plan. This happened to be Hope County, and you can see there are urban services area, they're projecting that primarily most of their growth to occur in this area, which attracts the study area. And Robertson County doesn't have a land use plan at this time. We also looked at municipal limits, the yellow being the city of Fairville, the blue is the town of Hope Mills. We also looked at the municipal influence area. The area in yellow is Fairville's MIA, and the area in green is Hope Mills. This was a portion where the Hope Mills information belonged, but I took it out, so even have to bore you with that. But basically the same information that we get went through for the county, we also put it together for the town of Hope Mills. Okay, the steering committee, which was consists of all volunteers, we had 19 meetings, there were over 38 hours using developing the plan, and we had between five and 23 participants. And I think tonight, we have a couple of members of the steering committee here, if they are here. Okay, the recommendations, by the way, that's Hope that's conducting the vision session. Okay, the recommendations that has been adopted is, the first thing that the citizens planning committee did is develop some goals and objectives, and those goals and objectives address residential development, commercial development, open space, transportation issues, community appearance, and those kinds of things. I'm not going to go into any details. The other recommendation is, the committee recommended that we protect the integrity of Fairville Regional Airport and its operation and its expansion potential, encourage the reuse of vacant commercial industrial buildings, establish satellite higher education facilities, help and chair for annex facilities in Hope Mills vicinity, promote better cooperation and continuity between the county and the municipalities in their annexation and zoning process, develop strip commercial development standards, protect existing valuable residential areas from incompatible uses. The other one, that was specifically for Hope Mills. Promote the preservation of historic structures and landmark. Like I said, the areas that's in red are primarily historic structures over 100 years old, the blue is Hope Mills Historic District, and of course, the brown line is Old Plink They also recommended that there be a leisure park facility somewhere on the west side of the study area. Currently, the closest leisure park is Lake Rim or Ornette Park. They also recommended that the lakes and ponds be restored for future water sources, recreation, power generation, generation and economic development. Of course, this being Hope Mills Lake, this is Hope Mills Number Two, and the other lake is Wallace Pond, just to be restored. They also wanted to create some kind of incentives for a large tract of land that currently has available water and sewer, and they felt like that these areas, areas that should be promoted for development first. They also wanted to, there are some areas inside the study area that were developed prior to the availability of water and sewer, and since that, since they have been developed, water and sewer has been made accessible to them. And basically what they were saying is that some kind of mechanism needs to be put in place so you could get water and sewer, in this particular case, sewer, these areas that don't have sewer but has sewer available to it, that some kind of mechanism be put in place so that sewer can be provided in these areas. And these are the same areas that like water, water is available, but they were developed prior to the systems, water being there. They also were to promote infill development. There are no dots that you see around, they are existing vacant lots that's outside the floodplain area that they recommend that they develop first, that some kind of incentives be given to get developers or home builders to build on those particular lots. And they do have water and sewer at their front door. They also recommended that FAMPA's biking, pedestrian connectivity plan be implemented in the area. And they also recommended that we promote greenway development along Leland Big, Rockfish Creek, Buckhead Creek, and Stewart Creek. They also recommended that, in this particular case, this is a possible location of the hour loop, this is development that's coming from Hope County, as you recall the slide on their land use plan. And as you look at the map, you see most of the roads are in an east-west pattern, and there are no connector roads. So basically what they were saying is they're not going to build this mega the loop anytime soon, that some kind of connectors be put in place so that the person that's coming south could get somewhere up north and tie these roads together, that it not be a thoroughfare. They also recommended that the ponds, lakes, and streams have minimum natural buffers. Based on their classification, for rivers, they felt like this should be 150 feet, for creeks such as Rockfish Creek, Beaver Creek, and Buckhead Creek, Stewart's Creek, 50 feet, and for drainage drains ways, 20 feet. They also recommended that the natural resources and historic and scene areas be protected, primarily the floodplain areas around the creek and lake system, also the bluffs that surround the creeks and be protected. They have unique vegetation, in some cases even mountain type vegetation that's rare in this area. They also recommend that we protect the integrity of Old Plink Road and any of the areas that, the open space areas that have, that are owned by nonprofit organizations, and of course, the historic buildings. These buildings, we don't know the significance of it, we just know that they're over 100 years old. They also recommended that a new fire station be located somewhere in the vicinity of this interchange, Business 301 and I-95, that serves this area and then the park to road area, which is at this location here. There were also some areas in the study area, they felt like there really wasn't a whole lot that they could do about them, but they do need some more detailed studies, and these are areas that have dirt streets, some of them paper streets. If you recall the maps, where some of them like water and sewer, these were some of the areas, and some of them have substandard housing, and they felt like that these areas need special studies with maybe some community development type funding, but more concentrated planning in those particular areas. They also recommended that whenever there is a development that requires a buffer, that if there is a natural buffer in place, that that natural buffer stay in place, which means there could be no clear cutting or anything, and if there is not a natural buffer, that the area be planted whenever there's a. that the area be planted, whenever there's a buffer requirement for any development that they feel like would be intrusive to residential development. Cluster subdivisions, and basically, what they were recommending is that the houses be built on smaller lots and leave more areas open for open space. They also recommended that the entrance corridors be addressed to enhance them, primarily with signs at the entrance of the county, and of course, at Hope Mills, and the entrance corridors have certain level of beautification standards to enhance the entrance way into the county and the town. Okay, and this is their primary task, was to develop the detailed land use plan, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to start from the top. The area in blue, the areas they recommended for office and institutional type uses, the areas in red is commercial, recommended for commercial use, and that's primarily along the interchange, the I-95, the business 301, up business 95, and then Camden Road, North Main Street area in Hope Mills, commercial area, west of Hope Mills along Stony Point Road, Coming Road, and Hope Mills Road. They also recommended, this is the outer loop, and they recommend that at the interchanges, one at Camden Road and one at Black's Bridge Road, that this area be denoted as commercial, but that shouldn't occur until the road is constructed. The dark purple is industrial, heavy industry, the light purple is light industry, the brown area, what's seeing is farmland, the green is open space, the light yellow is suburban density, that's basically two acre lots, I mean, half acre lots, and where you see the hatchmark, the community felt that these were appropriate, would be appropriate areas for both stick-built and manufactured homes. For the light yellow is low-density residential, which is typical subdivision in the county. The orange is medium density, which is in these locations, where you see the hatchmark, that means that it's suitable for stick-built houses and manufactured home park, all individual lots. And then high-density residential is on the way, the high-density residential that was in downtown Hope Mills, and then mixed use, which could be either vertical mixed use, where you could have residential at the bottom, I mean, a residential at the bottom and commercial at the top, and there is, they're scattered throughout the study area, and that's primarily the land use plan.
Let's get Will. Go back, if you will, just for a second. Where is Parkton Road?
Parkton Road is right in here.
Where is it, right in there?
Mm-hmm.
How about Muscat?
Muscat Road is, it breaks off right in here.
Okay. Back.
Okay, the short-term projects, and these were just a list of projects that they felt like could be done within the next five years, and I'm not going to go through the list, but the first column is a list of the projects, the third column is the explanation of why the project is important, and then the third column is who they feel like should be responsible. And the only one that I'm going to mention is that when the steering committee started, it was shortly after we had the tornado outbreak, and they wanted to make sure that, I mentioned this, that an emergency shelter be constructed somewhere in the vicinity that could handle an L4 tornado. Basically, what they were saying is, even if they got worried, they had nowhere to go. So they felt like there should be someplace secure so that they could go to take shelter. And this is just a continuation of the list, and a lot of these are intersection improvements, drainage projects, and that kind of stuff. Okay. And that concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may have.
I move that we accept this presentation and this plan.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, are there any questions for Mr. Denning or discussion?
Just one question.
Yes.
Will, is there, is there any encroachment coming around the airport, just concerned about that?
Right now, there's not, and mostly they're around the airport zone for manufacturing, so right now, it's pretty well protected.
How about down the road?
Down the road, you can never tell. What we want to do, we want to make sure that in their long range plans, which we've looked at, that there are some areas that are developed residentially, that probably in the long term, probably need to transition to another use, but, you know, they will stay there and grandfather until that time comes.
Yes, Mr. Edge.
First question is clarification on this council's motion, I assume that's the resolution that we have before us, we're going to adopt.
Yes.
Okay.
You're official.
All right, and the second thing is a personal request, Will, when y'all do this again, I don't know if my eyesight's getting bad, but I asked Mr. King if he could see, you know, if y'all gonna present this stuff to us, I just wish we could see it. We need to see that, so we're adopting something that we haven't seen.
No.
We trust that.
If you could do that, I mean, when you do this, you know, I could read a thing up there, so I appreciate that.
Okay, I keep that in mind in the next presentation.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, we have a number of public hearings on minimum code enforcement, so we'll get right to it. The first item is case number MH 1162013. Mr. Hatchery, how are you going to break this down?
Individual inspector's going to be doing.
Roger that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is John.
Hey, John, how are you? Okay.
Commissioner Keith, there was a public hearing scheduled for the land use plan, we did have a couple of speakers signed up.
My apologies. At this time, Rick, we've passed this, still have the public hearing?
I should have just delivered all the public hearing.
Okay, my apologies, at this time, I am going to open the public hearing on the land use plan. Madam Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Our first speaker is Douglas Modi.
Mr. Modi, I do apologize for that.
No problem. I was, I've called all the developmental planning meetings, when we started this, we had hurricane problems, not tornado problems, and all the people that were at the Hope Mills meeting, there was probably seventy of them, and they all were wanting to have a shelter built. And with the adverse weather conditions that were occurring in the United States and around the world, I feel that it is very important that we start building shelters, not just for southwest Cumberland County, but for other areas in Cumberland County. I believe the planning board people have probably received plans after the New Jersey incident, and they, from the federal government, and those plans are probably available, so we can review those plans and start thinking about building. The other things are, is we talked about a sheriff annex, so an increase in our population so we can have more security for our people, our fire protection for the interstate, and also for the development of our southwest Cumberland County area, and also preservation of our waterways, and those are all valuable reasons why I concur and support this plan.
Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Our next and last speaker in favor is Ms. Brenda Cameron.
And Ms. Cameron, I'll apologize that we didn't hear you beforehand, but please.
Thank you for the opportunity, commissioners, and planning board, and fellow citizens of Cumberland County. Again, my name is Brenda Cameron, and I was a member of this volunteer committee to full-on help from the land use plan. I thank the Cumberland County Planning Department, Mr. Lord, Mr. Lloyd, Mr. Denning, Ms. Sykes, Mr. Lenville, Ms. West, who's now with Fan Poe, and a Fan Poe representative, usually Ms. Chapman was available at our meetings to help us with our transportation questions and issues. And having lived in Atlanta, New York, and different places around the country, I would sometimes hear remarks or grumbles about public employees. But I want to tell you, with my firsthand experience working with the Cumberland County Planning Department, from Mr. Lloyd on down the ranks, I have never worked or met a finer, more competent, professional, and dedicated group of people. Cumberland County is blessed to have these people to our veil, and that's straight from the heart and knowledge that I gained from the period of working on this. I learned a lot working on this committee, for instance, I learned a lot of acronyms, and when, in reading the Federal Observer, when I would read about Fayetteville MIA or Hope Mills MIA, I used to wonder, who are these missing people? And where did they, you know, how did they get missing? Where did they go? Well, I know now what MIA means. Although the southwest land use plan is a projection for the future, we need to begin now to begin the reversal of the errors of the past which have resulted in the urban drought and spill which we are currently suffering. Today, in reading the paper, I was reminded that tomorrow is the 150th anniversary of Lincoln's Gettysburg Address, and it may seem a little bit trite, but it seems so appropriate, I want to take a couple of words from his address, by the people, of the people, and for the people. That's what the southwest land use plan is. Of the people, by the people, and for the people. I thank you leaders of Cumberland County, giving the citizens of southwest Cumberland the opportunity to have a voice and to participate in our government process and our futures in Cumberland County, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. And at this time, I will close the public hearing, and.
Mr. Chairman, just to clean up the record, would any comments that you just heard at the public hearing have any impact on your prior decision to adopt this plan?
I'd like to call for the vote one more time, the motion was made by this council and seconded by.
Can I say?
Mr. Edge, I'd like.
I second it.
I have indicated Commissioner Evans as the second.
Okay. This time, all those in favor.
Unanimous.
Thank you, obviously, it's getting late for me. The Panthers and Patriots still haven't started yet. Okay, now we'll go back to the minimum housing, Mr. Hatchery, gentlemen, I think you have. Madam Clerk, if you'll swear in, we'll get started.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe.
Minimum housing case 116-2013, property owners Alicia Marie and David Leon McLaughlin, properties located at 1609 Halsey Loop in Hope Mills jurisdiction. This is some pictures of the property, there was a mobile home on it at one time, the mobile home became deteriorated, and they've been working on cleaning it up, but there's still a amount of work that needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. This time, I'll open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, we have any speakers?
We have one speaker in opposition.
In opposition, okay, please call the first speaker.
David McLaughlin.
Good evening, Mr. McLaughlin.
Good evening, board of commissioners and council members, yes, I'm David McLaughlin, I'm the owner of the property, and, you know, I had time, and I hadn't had time to finish doing the job that I was to do on the property, but Halsey Loop is being redeveloped, and they're going to put a new asphalt road there, and I just want to make sure that my boundaries and easement would be right according to the zone in that area. I own this property over twenty-some years, and it means a lot to me because when I got out of the military, I built my home there, and after the death of my son, you know, it still has sentimental value to me. So all I'm asking is just ninety more days, because being a disabled vet, and because, you know, the shutdown of the government system, and, you know, I suffered from PTSD one hundred percent, service-connected, I don't like a lot of stress, and I don't like a lot of people to get into my business, but I do want to comply to what the county is asking, and.
What is your plan, Mr. McLaughlin?
Well, I was going to finish turning that down, and over the months, we had some bad weather, rainy weather, and I was just going to clear it all up, and when they put the new road there, go ahead and put me another module home there that's strictly given by the VA, because I am a disabled vet, and I want to have all the access to put that module home there. So in order, before I can do that, I have to clean that property up first.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, we need to give him an oath, I believe, on his testimony.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, boy.
That's okay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you sure of writing here, putting that hand on the Bible, do you swear and affirm that the testimony you gave was the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, count, any questions from members of the commission? Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Did I understand, he was asking for ninety days?
He was asking for ninety days.
Additional ninety days.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, then I have a motion.
Okay, Madam Vice Chair, please.
I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector, wait a minute, is this the right motion?
It'll be fine.
As the true facts in this case, in order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within ninety days, in order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same in the registered dues.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, you got nine days?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item is MH 422013.
Property owner Sheila Bridges, Charlie Lewis, Craig Donner, and Jane Donner, properties located at 6766 Rockfish Road. This was a, kind of a combination of some manufactured housing and some stick-built housing that was put together, the owner of the property is deceased, and it has fallen into his family's hands, and they are currently attempting to sell the property. We're asking for demolition of this property.
Okay, this time, I'll open the public hearing, Madam Clerk.
We have one speaker in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jim Moller.
I think I got that wrong, I think I should be the other side of this thing.
All right, sir, you're speaking about opposition.
I'm speaking, yeah, opposition, I'm speaking for the owner of the property.
You administered oath to me.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm here representing the owners. They are out of favor, for the most part. And it is their intention to complete the demolition. When the process started, the, there had to be some testing for asbestos. Asbestos was found on the property, so they had to take the time to get the bids to remove it. The asbestos removal was completed October 30th or 31st. And so, they're now in the process of contracting to find someone to take the building down. Couldn't do that until the asbestos was taken care of, and that was just a couple of weeks ago. The family, the family members, they're spread out, and apparently, some of them, because of economics or some of the things that have happened from the government, they've had some financial setbacks, and they're trying to put together the money to actually do the work. They're estimating it's gonna cost about $1,500. Doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it is a whole lot to them. And they figure that, they do have a plan to come up with the funds to do that. It's looking like somewhere around February 15 to the end of February, so about 75, 90 days, they should have the funds necessary to remove the building and comply with it. And so, that's what they're asking for, is that much time. Mainly, not that they don't want to do it, but it's really mainly to come up with the money that they just don't have right now. And a big part of that, they didn't have any control of it. Had a lot to do with economics.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
They had, right at nine months already, and you're telling me they want three more months?
It, well, I guess that'd be two and a half to three months. I do know that timing, because I didn't come into helping them out with the property till probably about four months ago. And they did know about it. There was some family conflict on who was in charge of the property, how it was to be taken care of, and then who was gonna be actually responsible to pay the money to have this done. It was a family thing that took that much time, but Commissioner Edge, you are right. It's been a long time coming. And a lot of it had to do with the dynamics of the family and just money. And that's kind of where it's at right now. They were able to come up with the money to take care of the asbestos removal. I don't know the exact cost of the testing and removal, but that has been taken care of.
Okay. Do you feel comfortable that 90 days is sufficient?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Yeah. As someone who knows a little bit about dealing with family, this is, I understand. Commissioner Melvin, please.
The motion is to adopt the order and report the minimum housing inspector's true facts in this case, and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 90 days. That should give them sufficient time.
Yes, sir.
To order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action. To direct the clerk to incorporate foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same in the register of deeds.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, but at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And the motion has been made by Commissioner Melvin, seconded by the Vice Chair. All those in favor?
Question.
Sorry, discussion.
Does the inspector have a proof that this asbestos has been removed? Do you have, you have that proof that the asbestos has been removed?
No, not yet. They have not given me that report, sir.
Okay, Ms. Chairman, go ahead. Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Evans, Melvin, Council, Chairman Keith, and Commissioner Billy King.
All opposed.
Voting in opposition, Commissioner Edge.
Thank you.
Yeah, 90 days. Next item is case number MH 44-2013. Hey, how are you?
Fine, how are you?
I guess you gotta do your oath.
I'm Deborah Johnson.
Deborah, may I ask, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
This property is owned by Charles and Jacqueline Otis. Property is located at 5847 Holland Street, and this is what's left.
Okay.
I've been trying to get it cleaned up since March.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Or do we have speakers?
We have one speaker in opposition, Mr. Charles Otis.
Okay. Mr. Otis?
Yes, sir.
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Otis.
Put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Otis.
Yes, that is my property. The lady, I have spoke with the inspectors in health, and they have worked with me. It's been a little trying time for me. The tenants that I have there, you know, have some issues with finances and stuff. I take so responsibility for the issue that I had, what it was, the neighboring properties trying to get a waste management box there to try to remove the debris. So, I ran into some personal issues myself, not to make an excuse of it, but if I could get a box over there, a waste management box, I'm kind of anchored on both sides of the property and stuff. I can't access a waste management box from the front of the property. So, if I could get permission to get a box in from either side, which probably be the right side as you're looking at it, I could, with sufficient time, I could get the debris removed.
Yeah, I don't think we have the luxury of being able to direct the adjacent homeowners to allow access.
Yes, sir. So, I guess I need to, whatever I need to do in order to get permission, in order to have one access to it.
Are you asking for additional time?
Yes, sir.
How much time, you think?
Sixty to ninety days would probably be sufficient and stuff.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Otis? Okay, this time, Mr. Otis, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Okay, excuse me, sir, before you, in the meantime, before you close it. Just to make sure, so that I'm educated on exactly what I need to do. I mean, the issue is the trash with the trailer being torn down. Is that's what we're dealing with? Okay, no problem. I just want to make sure that's what we're dealing with.
Okay. This time, I'll open to a motion. The owner is asking for sixty to ninety days.
We question, Mr. Chairman, is this the latest decision of the minimum housing inspector? For 90 days or?
That's up to us.
That's what. Well, I was trying to figure out which exactly which.
First one.
Okay, thank you, sir. To adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case, and to order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 90 days. To direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders and ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Evans, Melvin, Council, Chairman Keith, and Commissioner King. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Edge.
Thank you, Mr. Otis.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is minimum housing 25-20, I'm sorry, 13. That was stripped from the record. The next item after that will be minimum housing 286-2013.
Hey, everybody. This property is owned by Eddie Taylor and Vanessa Taylor, as well as Chase Home Finance. Location is 2501 Quail Forest Drive.
Mr. Otis, we need to give an oath.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
This property's been vacant for three to five years. As you can see, the roof is collapsing on the front and the rear as well. Just directly across the street from Cumberland Mills School, right there on the corner as you come in on Sim Cotton, in the main interest of the subdivision there. As you can see, it's close to the neighbor's house, and this, no correction of actions has been done at all.
Right. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Do we have speakers?
There are no speakers.
Thank you all. Close the public hearing. For motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case, and to order the property owners to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days. To order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action. And to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same in the register of deeds.
Okay, I'll second it.
Question?
Yes.
To the inspectors, how much does it need to bring the house up standard?
That set an estimate of $50 a square foot. And the tax department has it reappraised, the dwelling itself, at $4,444 at this point.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry. Voting in favor, Commissioners Evans, Melvin, Council, Chairman Keith, and Commissioner Edge. Voting in opposition, Commissioner King.
Okay. Next item is minimum housing number 228-2013. Mr. Hatchett?
This property is owned by Lee and Sally Willis. It's located at 2410 South Lawrence Road in favor. We're ready to get y'all out of here.
I think there's something in the air tonight.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
This property is located at 2410 South Lawrence Road. It's off of Island Drive. It's a similar, mobile home's been abandoned and being stripped. Lots scattered with debris. We seek immediate demolition of this property.
All right, Mr. Hatchett, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak?
There are no speakers.
All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case, and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days. To order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action. To direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, next item is case number minimum housing 232-2013.
This property is owned by Roscoe and Rena McNee. It's located at 3643 Classic Road, which is off of Snow Hill Road. It's a manufactured home, a double-wide and a manufactured home subdivision. It's been placed there four or five years ago. Storopided. Repairs are gonna require an engineer's drawing.
Okay.
We seek immediate demolition.
At this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
And I will close the public hearing. Commissioner's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that.
Somebody won't speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They have not signed up.
Sir, you haven't signed up, but please, if you'd like to move forward, you have to take the oath, and we'll move forward, sir.
He didn't help.
Thank you for coming down.
Yes, sir.
Can you bring that back up?
Sir, would you put your left hand on the Bible?
Yes, ma'am.
And raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Thank you. And would you state your name for the record, please?
Roscoe McNee.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. McNee, thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, sir. You know, I want to tell you just how it is in all of you. I bought this box of land, and I moved this building on it, and I got the sub tank in it, I got the plumbing in it, and electric. See, a little odd in here, got to be done. They, what's going, I had called me, and said, I mean, something I love about cleaning it up. And I did. Got some guy who went and cleaned it up, but when I got, we were working on it, got everything going, I came, got sick. I got about all sick. I had to go house, took an operation. I had to have counsel. Doctor just began to let me drift on, and put the sub tank in it, and I don't like a whole lot more to be done. It just grew up a little bit while I was down. Doctor wouldn't let me out to do anything. So, that's where I could do a little something, I began trying to clamp my places.
Okay.
And I need some time.
Well, Ms. McNee, I don't know if you're aware, but they just mentioned that you have to get a architect to go back, or a engineer to go back in, which would probably be to bring it back up to standards, which could.
Well, I done bought enough of it. Bought enough of it, and doing the same too.
I think the cost of renovation on this piece would far outweigh the value.
That's it. I've been putting it together, when I could get a chance. But same is, doctor just began to let me go back doing something.
What are your intentions for this piece of property, Mr. McNee?
I'm building fixtures for myself. I'm turning over to myself.
Mr. McNee, it's gonna cost you more money than it would to get a new one on there.
Well, I got a lot of money in that, too.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. McNee? Madam Vice Chair?
Yes. Ms. McNee, realizing that that is an almost irreparable situation here, and you're putting good money, whatever, how much more time do you need?
If you, with my sickness and all, and I stay where I can go, I need about nine months.
No, I mean, I'm sorry. Ms. McNee, do you clearly understand that this property is uninhabitable and unreparable at this moment?
Well, I don't, I don't worry about that, that's all. I would just, if I would be liable, sir, I would ask three or four of y'all, all of y'all, to go out and take a look at this piece of property, and I will meet you there. I've been, I've been burying all my life.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to make a motion for it for 90 days, like we've given the other.
Okay. We can go into discussion after that, if you'd like to make a motion.
I move that we order, adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector's true facts in this case, and order the property owner to remove or demolish, to demolish the dwelling within 90 days. To order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action. And to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same in the register of deeds.
Okay. I'll second the motion. All right, thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Evans, you have a question?
I guess this for the inspectors. Sir, have there been any complaints about this property from any of your neighbors or anybody in the surrounding area?
This property is located about 50 feet from adjoining properties. The work that's been done on this mobile home was not permitted. There's been wiring run in there, plumbing that has not been inspected. If Mr. McNee would demolish this structure and clear that vacant lot, he would have a more valuable asset than this liability he has on his property right now.
Thank you, Mr. Hatchett. Ms. Evans, do you have any follow-up?
No, there's no follow-up. I mean, I, we clearly see the gentleman, and we know that's his property. He's doing everything in his power to bring it in. I know that we say that it's irreparable, and we see it. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, let's go forward. I mean, I think all of us understand the situation, and this the best we're gonna get today. today. All right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What we showing you on here is way back then, when I was in the house, and I grew up and got mad shit. I didn't clean it, and it all done, and it's not like that now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McNeil. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've always been in the heart that you give people the time they need to repair their homes. And giving you ninety days, I don't know what that's gonna do, but at least you give you ninety days to...
Right.
Look at him, ninety. Give me ninety.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil, and thank you for coming down tonight. Okay, all those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Evans, Council, Chairman Keith, Commissioners King and Edge. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Evans.
And the reason I'm voting in opposition is because I think he should just get more time. That's just me.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A question, please. For these cases that we have given ninety days to, I know that we are liable, are we liable now for the, anyone who gets hurt or injured?
Let's say the property owner.
Just the property owner.
Say the property owner's property.
No, ma'am. You have actually entered the demolition order. It's just a matter of the time. You have to give them thirty days, and you've given these folks ninety days.
And we've given them ninety days. Is there some way, can I, may I request that we put that, when these cases come back before us, a note on each case, please?
Okay. That we're not...
These cases won't come back. These ones you roll along tonight will not come back to you.
The ninety days are...
Oh...
After ninety days, he can do it.
When they do come back, they'll come back as a, normally as a consent item to assess the lien.
Consent, okay. All right. I'm sorry, I've been sitting, it seems.
Quick place to Mr. Chair, please.
Yes, sir.
I know, and I know...